All right, New Business, item number nine is a motion... Go ahead.
Can we move 18 up to the first row here?
It's a motion to move item number 18 up to the top of New Business. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, five to zero. So, item number 18 is a four IP, item 18. It's a motion to reassess an item that we had two weeks ago. So, it's essentially a motion to reconsider. So, two of our council members put this on, but when we have a motion to reconsider, it needs to be put out by somebody who is on the prevailing side under Robert's Rules of Order. So, to prevent a misuse of a motion to reconsider, only a member who voted on the prevailing side can move to reconsider. And so, this item is out of order and it is...
Matt doesn't say reconsider, it says reassess. That's why that reconsider isn't in there.
But it's essentially a motion to reconsider, that's the goal of it. You know this from the motions in the budget where you, where they want to change your vote on the budget, you're the only one who put the motion forward.
Well, this is a reassess. I'm not trying to change the sale or stop the sale, I'm just reassessing the sale of the Belmont Building.
And so, I'm on that, on a motion as well. There's actually some content in this motion that are separate action items that are related to the library project, so it's not specific to the sale of it. There's some action that we'd be interested in talking about.
But the motion is a motion to reassess, which is a motion reconsider, and your original draft of this was to reconsider. It came in 10 minutes before the agenda, it would have been withdrawn from the agenda as a motion to reconsider otherwise, but it came in 10 minutes before the deadline, so we really didn't have an option.
Unfortunately, I have a full-time job, and this is real estate we shouldn't be talking about in the first place, okay? This is stuff, we shouldn't be going over this in the first place. So, it's reassess, I beg to differ, and we should need to get a ruling from our esteemed council.
I just think you need to be able to read Robert's Rules of Order, Patrick, but if you want to...
There it is. I took a look at the motion, Patrick, and it really doesn't matter what it's labeled or entitled, or titled as, it's clearly a motion to reconsider, and the rules do require that the motion to reconsider be brought by somebody who voted in affirmative, so you're not the proper party to bring this kind of motion.
Okay, understood, thank you, thank you. All right, so, any thoughts on this? Do you have any on that? Reconsider this?
The motion's out of order. If they want, if they have new information to bring forward, if you want to share anything during public comment in open forum, you can go ahead, but the motion is...
Can I move that public comment?
I don't... You can make a motion to do that if you want.
Like to make a motion, move up public forum?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion failed to discern. New Business, item number nine, is a motion to approve the purchase of one replacement six-inch fire...
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, five to zero. Next is open forum, public comment. These are items that people in the town want to comment on, issues that are of interest to the town, so I ask people to come forward and comment.
If we move first?
Go ahead. Mr. Murray's requested to go first.
Sorry, I'll just wait a few moments. Mike?
Sir?
All right. Just wanted to discuss the sale of the Belmont Marketplace. Certainly, over the last two weeks, there's been a lot of concern, so it's just a quick get another poll, we can dip right through here. Okay, the cost, we discussed these costs earlier, a couple of weeks ago, delay, basically $3.50 a day, $98 a month. Wait till the next election, it's another, you know, they thought, $235,000. Cost of litigation, that's an unknown. It's my understanding, two attorneys, at least one's been retained, another one soon to be retained. I think this is a lot of wasted energy, and these monies could go towards a build-out of the building. The dissension, when we started out with a $5.00 million bond approval, we purchased the building, I think voters right now feel we'll disenfranchise. And right now, there's at least four voter initiatives exist for different reasons. And I think what the solution is, and it's in the chart, that we can have a special election within four months. And this is a question I propose in this election. And this, I gotta give credit to my secret co-sponsor, Jill Law, because last year he won the election on this very subject. So, the question would be, should the town...
Not a co-sponsor, Robert.
No, but you, inspiration. Should the town in Narragansett move the Martin Luther's Library to the town-owned Belmont Market space? Renovate with a previously passed $5.8 million bond and rename Narragansett Pier for the library? This would be a vote ballot, within four months, up and down vote, we just, you know, finally, we get, you know, an up and down vote, and that would be it. Put this to bed, either we're gonna move forward in that building, or we're not gonna move forward in that building, and let the people decide again. I'm looking into a more, because last year, you suggested we have a, you know, a vote on...
Actually, I suggested we put it onto the election, so we can have, this cost us $30,000 to have a special election.
Well, it's gonna cost us $230,000.
To clarify, if we could have it as a question on the ballot, that's what I suggested.
Let's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, this being, it's about $30,000, but it's kind of a resolved position. In four months, we'll have a path to go down. I think there's one more slide there, Mike. And after the results of the election, we got a little bit, I think the town council should sign a resolution, should be implemented, move forward expeditiously without prejudice regarding the election results. If the library build-out is no, then we go with rehabbing the contract, and we just get behind it, because this has gotta stop. We can't go two years battling and all this divisiveness, it's not helping, so, you know, often it's been said, there's a silent majority out there who don't want the location in the Belmont. This is giving everybody the chance to get another way to be happy, and have a defined vote on a defined location for a defined project, and Jesse's sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Just briefly, just to pack up my point. Again, there are three buildings there, there is not one building, but three buildings, a liquor store, which seems quite successful, the second floor, which probably is the greatest floor we've ever designed by a human being, totally useless, and the white elephant, the old Belmont Market. Back when I went in there with Patrick, I wished I had some peanuts to feed to the white elephant. I don't think this is going to sell, and around $2.8 million. And I do agree with Patrick, this can't go on, and I suggest again, three ends, moderation, of discussion, some meditation, but most importantly, we need mediation. If this was a case where mediation might help, much more than a special vote, it is, and a mediator would get the library board and listen to its position, meet with the council, go back and forth, back and forth, and maybe there is some hope of reconciliation. But mediation really is what we really need, and it's a lot better than having another device of election, because this time, the no people are going to play hardball with the yes people. I think a mediator could solve this problem.
Thank you. Yes, Harry.
I'm here tonight representing NPRA, our chairman, Joe Lortorio, is away on vacation. We recently had a little breakfast, and many of our NPR members, NPRA members, you know, following your vote, they were expressed their dismay and concern over the decision to sell the business, or the Belmont Market, before, you know, pricing it out. I believe NPR is the only neighborhood organization that professionally pulls its membership each year to accurately reflect member opinions on the major issues facing both the town and the pier. And so, following on that commitment, given the feedback we have, our chair took a quick email survey to see how many members supported getting it out of the pier, giving it priced out of both options, you know, giving a price, to rehab the current library, and you're getting a price to convert the Belmont, you know, the former Belmont, you know, market facility, before putting it up for sale. Many of our members, NPRA members, voted for the bond, and therefore expect to get either a new library or a newly rehabbed, you know, library as a result. Our member opinions vary widely as to which build-out option is best, and how inclusive the library should be regarding other community functions, and I don't plan or pretend to turn up these everybody's news here. But most of our members do agree that libraries are our community gathering institutions, and the representative poll is unanimous with respect to the following points. Our members responded unanimously, responded in the following ways. Now, we feel that the town has taken a step to purchase this building, the town council should get an RFP developed that is designed for solicit calls on both library build-out options, rehabbing the current facility, and converting the former Belmont Market, before any decision is made to sell the Belmont Market. And we are here before again, here tonight, we have full business plans, at least at the moment, and we believe you can secure a negotiated packaged price for an RFP that includes pricing out both options, at far less, you know, double the cost of doing two separate RFPs. That can be done, those types of negotiations are done all the time, it's called volume purchasing, I've done it myself many times as a business person. So, our members feel, we're really, there's no point in the voting, now we got here, but where we are, our members should definitely define that we should get both of these options priced out properly, so we know what the cost differences are, before taking the actions to sell the former Belmont Market. NPRA members also can unify in the fact that at all costs, the library should be made an appear, and also, that should the town see to it that, you know, any future use of a library building, should it turn out that it did not become a library, we feel now that the town owns it, that it should not be sold other than to some usage that is complementary to enhancing the pier as a town said.
Thank you.
Those points we reunify, I think. And just want to say, I think, you know, clearly the last council ruled the ball, and it didn't draw fiduciary rate sugar before purchasing this building. But that failure doesn't justify an equally impulsive movement, to sell the building before these options are priced out. The cost is trivial, we think, in the grand scheme of things, and the benefits include, you know, harmony that can come out of, open, you know, process that lays the options bare, you know, prices of all, for all to sell, and the facts speak for themselves.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Al.
I'm in agreement with these two gentlemen in regards to the RFP unified. I'm sure all members, you guys are volunteering your time, you're all highly educated, and we respect you all, and you all want what's in the best interest of Narragansett. And, you know, my dad's attended town meetings for years, he always wanted the best in Narragansett as well. So, I think if we can work together legally, I think that's the best way to go, and I think it would enhance our town immensely, we won't have to get the lawyers involved, we won't have to have a bidet case, not to be one way or the other, if we can work together as a team, I think we're all in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want to state your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, yeah. Alan said it before, I think, Don Ness Terrace, yeah. Yes?
My name's Carter Starr, 23 Second Street in Paragon. I just wanted to clarify in the very middle of my head at the prior town council meeting, in relation to comments from some council members, that because they want to see it on the council, meant that they had self-proclaimed mandated block the library move. To be clear, the three councillors who voted to put the newly purchased building up for sale, only received 43% of the vote during the last election. The candidates who are openly and vocally in support of the library move, received 57% of the vote. 43% of the council vote recipients should not be dictating and overwhelming what is the will of an overwhelming majority of Narragansett voters. The 68% that voted for the bond, and the 57% of the voters who voted for candidates supporting the library. I also hear that the vote of the three minority vote candidates on the council appears to be disrupting some other town spending. I'm not sure on that, I would want to be clarified on that. I just hope that at least one of you three will recognize the damage that you are doing to the town's reputation, and to the town's finances, and will change your vote to be in line with what the majority of voters want and have voted for in this town. Recognizing one's mistakes and correcting them is an admirable trait, and particularly politicians. If we have a gentleman in town, please do not continue sowing divisiveness or discord in the town, we need to just do what the voters voted for, not what the minority voted for. You represent the whole town, not just the minority who voted for you.
Janice, just take your address, please.
Fireman Conroe. I don't come to many town council meetings, this is new to me. And I had some plans tonight, some really good plans, but I canceled them, because this was so important to me. There isn't as big a crowd tonight as there was before, but everyone that was here before is listening, either on television, or they're going to be here tomorrow, and they all feel exactly the same. I don't think they've changed any, I know I haven't, so I'm not gonna repeat what everyone said, but they're going to hear about the decision that you made tonight, especially when you just put that motion aside that these two members had for us. So, there's not really much more to say. I will say that the last time, at that last meeting, I had a flicker of hope when there was a line going out the door to speak to you, and people were pleading, and they were begging, and I thought to myself, one, maybe one of the three is going to hear us and change. I just looked at it, and I had it, I had that hope, so, I still have it, and I hope you will, and if not, I agree with whatever anyone wants to do about another vote, or whatever, because the people did vote for this. Thank you.
Hello again.
Hello.
I just want to say, I appreciate Pat Murray's and Jesse Pugh's work to help get the Narragansett, to get Narragansett the library we deserve, the library we need, the library that will continue to serve us, and most importantly, the library in the pier that the majority will reform. The center of town in the pier is the ideal location for the Narragansett library that we voted for. The South End, as proposed by some on Clock Road, is not convenient, especially for our students who don't drive. Plus, remember, this is Rhode Island, we don't like to go too far. Also, I'd like to mention field trips, as many of the folks who work at the library, the dedicated individuals there will tell you, there are often walking field trips to the town library, from the elementary school, and sometimes the peer school. Field trips are a wonderful part of education, and the idea of walking to the library does so many positive things. You're being greeted by walking, you're not using buses, you're getting outside, you're moving, and then you go to the library for the icing on the cake. So, if we put the library somewhere else, we're not gonna be able to have those wonderful Additionally, the center of town, having the library in the pier, helps to give our town more of a community feeling, or a communityness. I heard somebody say that, why would you want a library near the beach? We are the beach. But one of the reasons you want a library near the beach is, you stop by, you get a book, you get a candle, you get whatever else, the many things that the library offers, and then you go to the beach and enjoy yourself. Or, maybe you just get a book, and you go over to Disney Park, and read your book on a blanket there. Why rehash the will of the people and spend more money than necessary by stalling? Narragansett wants the new pier library that the majority voted for. Thank you.
Paul's Unfurlough, 700 Missouri.
A lot has been talked about tonight, the will of the people. Believe it or not, there's more than one issue in Narragansett. We saw tonight, there's a lot of town business. There is no mandate for the library at the Belmont Building.
Paul's directing this up here.
So, that's just an example of what happens if somebody comes up here and says something. The reason the silent majority doesn't speak up is because they don't want to be ridiculed and harassed. There were four candidates that the friends in the library endorsed, two of them got on. One lost by 87 votes, the other one finished in the basement. The town cares about more than the library. In fact, you could argue the town was telling us to have people, you had somebody that ran against the library moving it and got elected. So, all this sort of conjecture on the vote count, the percentages, town charter says five people get elected, five people make the decisions. You don't have the votes right now, and so, how do you solve that? All the talk about lawsuits and all the instability that's going on, is coming from the library side. It's embodied by the two spiritual leaders that are on the council, who've decided to insult people who oppose it, insult fellow councillors. That's, I mean, it's a hostage-taking situation. So, it's like, jeez, it's a nice town you got here, it would be terrible if you got sued. They're instituting those actions. So, why didn't we show some real leadership and build some trust, instead of PowerPoints, making fun of the president of the town council, instead of insults, obscene texts? Why didn't we get some real leadership to build trust between the library and the town council, rather than threats after threats after threats?
Thank you.
All right, so, this is where the special election comes in. This barrels the hatchet, this is a reset, it's a specific question about this issue, up and down vote. If you get a silent majority, they get it another way that they have, and this will be settled.
Thank you, Patrick. That's, no, that's, they're good.
Karen Chapp, Shuttles, 20th Street. I really resent another citizen coming up and harassing the people that live in the library, making all kinds of crude and unnecessary remarks about our right to exercise our First Amendment right, which is our, our important attitude about the library. And, Miss May, she was quoting me when recording, I was away last week, and quoting somebody who had sent me an email, and I know that was me. I had asked you to ask forgiveness and step down, and have the book getter also step down, and give the leadership role to people that deserve it, that know how to build communities, that fought for what they believe is right, which what the people believe is right. I don't like the attitude of a monarchy taking over our democracy, and sniggering when we talk, making fun of when we talk, and putting to bed all the hard work the people have advocated for the library. And I know I've spoken to a couple of them individually, Mr. Lima and Jill, and I feel I was very betrayed once you got elected to the council, with the attitude that's been, and I find the attitude is really bringing down the whole town. People aren't gonna move to this town because of their behavior and their little windows and treating citizens as an enemy. I think it's disgraceful. And Miss May, if you can twist and turn your words... And Mr. Chap, you can twist and turn your words, but obviously you're a destructionist, you don't really care about the community, because if you did, you wouldn't be doing all the things you're doing. And I find that it's my community, it's our community, and I don't see you building anything except destruction and disturbing the people that are trying to grow and build the community. It's like the most times here, I think here backwards, a lot of people that don't live here full-time, that both have or rent out a lot of their homes so they don't want to spend any money for the town. And it's turning into getting recruiting students, a lot of towns that's families don't want to live here. And I think it's disgraceful.
For the record, I did not misquote you.
Yes, you did.
I did not.
Yes, you did. And I even wrote it through the...
If you wanted to share the email with everyone, Karen, you can.
I wrote it, I went to the editor of the paper, Matt.
Go ahead.
I wrote the letter. Oh, but you're good at forwarding the letters to the NPR.
Why didn't you share?
Do you claim you know the...
Karen, I'm gonna, Karen.
Because you're a lawyer?
I'm, you're out of... I did not misquote you, why didn't you share your email then?
I don't have a ruling, but maybe one of members of the NPR does.
Thank you.
Tracy Bynardner, Kingstown Road, Naragansett.
Get a little clarification.
Yeah.
Last time that you spoke, you gave an address, it sounded familiar to me, 35 Kingstown Road.
And it is.
It is a library address.
It is a library.
So I, because it sounded familiar, I asked our town clerk just to clarify.
Good idea.
You're free to speak, free to speak, but I wanted to make sure that you're a Naragansett resident.
Not for the moment.
You're not, so you're a South County... Just want to make sure everybody knows that you are a South Kingstown registered voter.
Exactly.
Just want to point that out.
Thank you. And I just want to point out, for 19 years I lived here, but it made, they made it impossible for me to do that, so I live in West Naragansett. My first point, and these are simply points, just my observation. It seems that the open forum is manipulated in order to be the least convenient for the townspeople. Just an observation. Mr. Maddox continually refers to Robert's Rules, which I can't imagine were written so that constituents never get an opportunity to ask a council member a direct question and get an answer. Mr. Maddox accused the library board of trustees and friends of the library of being an angry mob who had created a frenzy to influence the town people in supporting them to put him out of office by any means possible. I was at the meeting where he said that, and I certainly was here when he said it again last Sunday, and I don't believe it was accurate. Mr. Lima, on April 16th, stated on camera that he doesn't have to answer any questions from constituents, especially those who did not vote for him. I found that odd. Ms. Waller, who also mentioned that although the townspeople were encouraged to write to their town council member at naragansett.gov, that she never opens those emails because she doesn't know who they might be from. I simply have to wonder what Mr. Waller, Ms. Waller and Mr. Lima could possibly be keeping them on this council. And I think we're all wondering that. In the face of 1,200 petitions, jam-packed council meetings, expert testimony from state officials and fundraising professionals, impeccable financial analysis week after week after week, demonstrating minimal impact on the future taxpayers and ruthless determination to be physically responsible to those taxpayers, I simply can't imagine, and we're all wondering, what's keeping you on the council and stopping you from resigning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Stanley.
Stanley Chowski, Naragansett. The library does wonderful things. It has movies and lectures and speakers, and for that it needs an auditorium. I just saw a yoga sign, for that it needs a gym. It has youthful events, and for that it probably needs a facility like Clock Road has. It has senior events, probably special movies for them, and for that it needs a senior citizen center. Go to the URI, you see that library and its open space full of tables. They want quiet space for the kids to go over there with the computer. So there's so much required there. I'm not so sure this one building can satisfy all the event activity that's being pursued by the library. So maybe we need to explore whether we could use this bond to update and improve all the facilities that could be said, could be said is part of the library, is part of the library buildings. Library, it doesn't have to be one building, South Kings has numerous buildings. But maybe pursue maybe something that could fix all our buildings, all these events could happen, not just this one. So we need a little more investigation on this. Thank you.
Stanley, just to clarify, that bond can only be used for new real estate, can't use it on existing buildings?
Can't use it on existing buildings.
That the town owns, yeah, that'd be new real estate.
Well, that's unfortunate at this point, because I'm not so sure one building is going to be able to do all of this library's trying to do. We've got a problem here. We better look at the, we better look at the... How do they, how can they do with the, with this small building, the Belmont Building? Another thing, libraries, quiet space. If you look at URI, went to URI, all you have there now is they're taking down all the books, and they've just got tables, tables and seats. And I don't even see that many computers, everybody brings their own computer. So the new library, the new library of the future is tables, so somebody can go in there with their computer and have a quiet space, quiet space. And possible events here, sort of, I'm not so sure when looking at what the future of libraries is. It's quiet space, I think, rather than an activity area. And therefore, we have to separate that. How do we do that, I don't know. I hope you look at that. This one building, I'm not so sure can do that. I'm not so sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Erger.
I am a silent majority, and so I figured I'd speak. And there's many more people that I know that feel the same as I do, just about the library.
Just take your name, Richard.
Richard Erger, 25 Marion Avenue, resident town Naragansett for 53 years. And I'm a little confused with the wording, I guess, on the referendum. Does anyone know, do we have the actual wording? I thought it said to renovate an existing town library or purchase or, what is it?
It's purchase and renovate.
Yes, I watched the meeting on, I think it's July 18th, when it was passed in 2016. That's what I'm just going by, so if I'm wrong, correct me please. But there's a lot of this, I've been listening to the first time, I come to the meeting and make the last one. But the back and forth and the need calling and calling out on social media, coincidentally, it happened to be on one of the pages I was added to. And what I've seen from people in town and the attacks that are levied on the town council and council members, I can't believe it. I mean, I think there's people that are older than me and adults, and I cannot believe if they talk the way they're talking, how they want to disrupt a meeting and how they're going to go about it. And I haven't seen anyone in these forums, in the leadership of the library group or something like that, maybe try to tone it down and say, we shouldn't take that approach, we should be professional or at least cordial and not disruptive. So I find that to be a real problem. So there's many other issues, I guess, I can discuss, but one of the things I'll just say, I think it would be the library for location. I love the idea of a library. I'm pretty sure that everyone in town council has said that they love the idea of a library. I just don't like the location of the Gilbein Building. I didn't know that the Belmont Building was on the back. I never saw it. I saw it to renovate or whatever existing building by, that was it. That's what I voted for and the people I know voted for. So then I find it almost laughable, after this, to hear someone speak and say, you can go get a book, go to gazebo park, laughable that you have to walk off town property through a commercial property and then to a town park place to enjoy your book. Because you can't do that at the library when you walk outside and spread your blanket on the asphalt up front. Because there is no green space, there's no trees, there's no grass, there's no birds flying around, there's nothing for children to see, except a closed-in building where they can be housed inside. So I'm against the Belmont Building, not against the new library. I think there's a couple of choices we could make, or renovate the existing one. I don't think the existing one's the answer. I think that we could find a little location in town, close by the pier, that's accessible to everybody, and we have, the town's only a mile wide, it's not that far a drive. And you certainly could find a place to read a book outside in a green space in a different location. Thank you.
Richard, can I approach the... We just made the call. All right. It's a public comment, right? Situation. Not a court of law. This is not a question and answer session, Patrick. See? It's not...
I think the point I was trying to...
It's not a court of law, it's not a question and answer session.
I think everyone keeps calling off the 60%, 7% of the voters voted for the Belmont Library. I don't think that's the truth, and if, please someone correct me, I'm pretty sure what the verbiage was about renovating the existing building or purchasing the existing property.
It's a purchase and renovate.
Right, but they're saying the Belmont Building, so everyone keeps saying that the majority voted for the Belmont Building, I don't think that's true. So, please someone correct me.
Thank you.
Matt, it's a purchase and renovate, right? Yeah, go ahead. Okay. I wasn't planning on speaking before, but I can answer a couple of questions for Rich as well while doing this. So it is the acquisition position in renovation of real estate, so not for, but and, so it does specify that you have to purchase real estate. But I do want to go through a little bit of the timeline over the last few years on how this, how we got to this point, because I think there is some confusion whether it's the Belmont Building or whether it's, you know, another space in town where we can renovate the current building. So I'm just going to quickly go through the last three years with the town council, the board of trustees, and maybe clarify some of what happened and how we got here. So in September 2015, there was a town council work session, there was a new library discussion. Members of the town council were Matt Mannix, Susan Cicilline Bonanno, Patrick Murray, Ray Rinaldi, Chris Wilkins. So a different council, members with different backgrounds, different political affiliations, different philosophies. There were four proposals discussed at that meeting, so this is 2015. The four proposals were renovate and expand the current site, build a new library at the current site, so I'd be tearing it down, the building from scratch, move and renovate, excuse me, the Belmont Market, so move to and renovate Belmont Market, or to build a new library near the community center. So those were the four options. We have minutes from these meetings, so, you know, it's all on record. A few of the, few things said at this meeting. Matt Mannix asked if the board saw one option more viable than the other options. It was noted that the move to the Belmont Market was more viable. Susan Cicilline Bonanno said she would like to explore the Belmont Market. Chris Wilkins said he thought Belmont Market was more viable for the downtown area and if it was financially feasible for a bond referendum. Ray Rinaldi also commented he did not like the idea of a new building near the community center. He also said that Belmont Building was a good idea. Patrick Murray said the Belmont property was obvious choice and asked if there was any chance Gilbein would donate it. Matt Mannix noted that a lot of work and vetting had been done on the four options, and he thought a deal breaker for him would be the Belmont property, not owning and building, not owning the building and the land together. But we ended up buying the building and the land. Chris Wilkins commented that leasing was not an option. Matt Mannix asked if the council wanted to cross off any of the four options or if it had one option they thought was first on their list. The consensus was that Belmont property and the existing site were the favorites and the site of the community center was out. It was also noted that the Belmont property should be purchased and not leased. So again, this is directly from the minutes from that, from that meeting, so these aren't, it's not my summary, it's specifically read off of that. October 15th, 2015, Matt Mannix explained that the town needs to own the land. So that was the sticky point, that he didn't want to have a condo situation or lease it when it had to own the land. Town council meeting, April 4th, 2016, there was a motion placed on the agenda on the new business. A motion to adopt a resolution requesting the general assembly to authorize the town to place a bond referendum question on the November 2016 general election ballot that had passed would authorize the town in Naragansett to issue not more than $5.8 million in bonds and notes for the purchase or construction of a new library. It is the consensus of the library board, town council and town staff that an authorization in this amount will allow the town to purchase an existing building and perform renovation construction work necessary to develop a fully functioning library. After reviewing options that included the renovation, reconstruction of the existing library building, and the purchase of the former Belmont Market Building along with 59 parking spaces, the preferred plan at this time is the latter, the acquisition and buildup of the Belmont Market Building. So then we had an advertisement for the, for the bond. This was placed in the newspapers around town. Again, not the official ballot measure on, you know, on the ballot, but this was what was advertised. The purchase, the purpose of this borrowing is to provide the funds for the town to acquire the former Belmont supermarket and administrative offices in the pier marketplace along with approximately 59 parking spaces and to renovate and equip that space as a library for related costs of design, financing and acquisition. October 13th, 2016, we have the South County Independent, Matthew N. Wright, the reporter, covering the beat for the Independent. On November 8th, Narragansett residents, Narragansett voters will decide if they wish to spend $5.8 million to build a new library in the former Belmont Market in the pier marketplace. Should Narragansett spend $5.8 million to move Moore Illusions Memorial Library to the former Belmont Market space in the pier marketplace? November 10th, just after the election, Narragansett, again, Matthew N. Wright, South County Independent. Narragansett voters want a new library, they're willing to pay for it. By nearly two to one margin, voters approved local ballot question number eight. Tuesday night authorized the town to spend $5.8 million to move Moore Illusions Memorial Library to the former Belmont Market space. Narragansett Times, different reporter, Phil Cosalina. November 16th, 2016, the Moore Illusions Memorial Library is proposed to go to the location of the former Belmont Market in the pier marketplace. Then we had the ballot. Yeah, so basically, we're talking 2015 through the election, the narrative was always the Belmont Marketplace, the council was in consensus, it wasn't finally on the ballot, but if you're going to negotiate for real estate, you're probably not going to advertise it on the ballot. You kind of lose a little leverage. So that makes sense to not specify it on the ballot, so you can still work negotiations. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. I understand there is a silent segment of the population who's not interested in the Belmont Market. The interesting thing about saying silent majority is that it's kind of, it's a convenient excuse, it's a convenient term, because you can't prove it and you can't disprove it because it's silent. So the only way that you can prove it is to get a vocal majority. And I would stand behind Patrick's call for a special election. I think if, you know, if we're wrong and everyone, you know, 90% of people are wrong, vote again, specify their question, we pledge to follow the results of that. We don't want to build something that people don't want in town. So I'm confident it'll pass, if it doesn't pass, we were wrong. And I think, you know, we're losing $10,000 a month in a... And I think, you know, we're losing $10,000 a month in, uh, construction costs, you know, increases. Do this, $20,000, $30,000, we can do it in three or four months, so we can move on. We'll do it where we want. But selling the building without having this discussion, without the RFP, that's just not the right thing to do.
My name is Patty Harkrey, I'm the library director. I do not live in town, but I do see a lot of people using the library, and I want to take this time to remind the council and the members of this audience why the library, people are here and speaking out to how much the library means to them. I have statistics that I'd like to share, we fill these out annually for the state, and this tells you how much our library is used and what a resource we have. Right now, for 2018, we have 7,376 library card holders. That's almost 50% of the town's population. We also have a collection, the size is 154,000 items, 699. Our circulation is 171,999. That means every item in the library checks out at least once a year. As far as programming, I know there's a discussion about what's appropriate for a library or not, but let me ask you this. Is there someone in town or an agency in town that can host 435 programs a year and bring in 9,941 people? Those are the kinds of statistics that we look at for the year. Circulation may be going down, but library use overall is up, and we have 118,384 visitors a year. And that is a lot of traffic for a 9,000 square foot building. To have a building twice that size would let us to do, let us do the things that we have been doing over the years, just in more comfortable situations, safer situations, and overall lending to the life, better quality of life for the community residents. Thank you.
So, since no one mentioned it here tonight, can I just hear it for the patriots? I think that we should always remember that Coach Garnacchia is actually a member of the Pier Residents Association, he and his wife, Sora. We have a linkage to the patriots right here in Narragansett Pier. So, words haven't worked, and data hasn't worked, numbers haven't worked, so I thought maybe a picture would work. This picture is worth a thousand words, because it's a picture taken at the event to celebrate the acquisition of the Belmont Building. There it is. And clearly in the picture, it's like going to a party. You usually go to a party unless you sort of want to celebrate what happened. You can clearly see Candidate Lima, Councilwoman Lawler. Candidate Lima, Councilwoman Lawler. I wonder why you were there? And maybe if you take a step back, you'll realize that this is why people don't trust you.
Direct your hand, question, direct it to me.
Absolutely, Council President. This is perhaps why people don't trust these folks, because they feel it was a bait and switch, because this was October 28th, or there above, precisely two weeks or so before people went to vote. So why did you go to a celebration for acquiring a building with Mr. Gilbein? And you walked into a meeting in December 3rd after you were sworn in and said you didn't want to build the building there? I don't get it. So I want to talk about a question that Mr. Lima asked the night of the workshop, because it really worries me. What is the plan of the no votes if the state stops granting waivers? Mr. Lima asked a question of the oldest director at the workshop. He said, "Why can't they," and I assume he met the library patrons, "just go somewhere else?" Remarkably, the oldest director used the example of Central Falls while it was in receivership, being allowed by the city potucket to use their libraries. So I ask you, if we lose our waivers, because we have no strategic plan to implement it any longer, has anyone discussed with the neighboring towns, the town of South Kingstown, how they can accommodate 10,000 patrons a month, rising exponentially each summer? Mr. Lima, you asked if we could pay a fee of an unknown amount to the Ocean State Library as a separate 5 month C3, but we don't even know if we can do that, and we're out of compliance. So what is your plan? I have never heard the three of you address the very real issues that are facing us. The library's in crisis. We know we're not ATA compliant, which is not just a shameful embarrassment for our town, and places people at a genuine risk, but there are so many other issues that don't seem to concern you, because you never talk about them. Just a few of them are the I.O.S. is substandard. There's just one rear emergency exit. There's no ramps or wheelchairs or assisted equipment. The access to the shutout valve for the water main, the furnace, and electrical panels are inaccessible, except through floor plan or in the children's room. There's no doors for emergency exits in some rooms, and so for the mezzanines and second floors can't be used. There's so many violations. But one of the most glaring deficiencies is that children do not have separate bathrooms from adults, which is an issue of significant public safety in the town, and what is your plan, please tell me, to keep children safe? What is your plan to keep children safe? I listened to Councilwoman Lawler often discuss her belief that this project in the Belmont is just too large in scale and too big for Narragansett. We're a small town, we should settle for a small library. And you know, I wondered if she was right. So we did a little bit of research on the subject, and all I can say is you're grossly uninformed.
Thank you, Meg.
I'm all, you let Mr. Schofield talk, and he doesn't live here full-time. Did you know that...
May I open the seat? I've had enough of your destructiveness. Go to your spot. Thank you, thank you.
I'll finish up, man, I know you want to be a gentleman. Did you know that nearly eight out of 10 public library systems serve rural areas or small towns? Did you know that Bill and Melinda Gates began a foundation dedicated to small-town libraries? The Best Small Library in America Award is given annually to public libraries serving populations like ours under 25,000, and it encourages and showcases exemplary work and grants money to libraries whose towns have risen to the challenge of creating small libraries to serve their communities.
May I have a round of your amount?
One of the recent recipients of these funds wrote this, "Our innovations have brought us closer to the people we serve, and we're incredibly thankful to our patrons, our donor, and our town council." We need our town council, all that's missing is our, is some enthusiasm for our town council to let Narragansett be part of the library evolution in America. Please, let us have our library.
Tam Weiner.
Yeah, you're down. Go ahead.
I'm being close to town hall. And you're very good neighbors also. Thank you so much. Now on a lighter poll. How many people have lived in this town since 1950? Please raise your hand. Did I see one person?
A dress and a chair.
1950. I've been here since 1950, and we had a library on Beach Street. It was a spin of paint, little shop, and Buddy Coxall was the librarian, and we had a kerosene stove in the winter, so that the people from Narragansett could come and get their books. I think there were three, I think there were about 3,000 people here in 1950. I know you weren't, but you might have some history. And we had a wonderful town meeting, you know, the one of the moderator stands up, and then people stand up and talk, and they give a vote for everything. We had a town at about right in this room, because this was the elementary school, kind of the 9th and 9th. And right up here in front, a group of about 10 men.
With dirty voices.
When a probably was, a motion was made, and the moderator would say, "All the neighbors say a," these 10 men would shout, "A!" Negative, negative. And a few others would say, "No, the a's happen." Now, these 10 men were not elected, but they were, they all met up in Westlake's, you know where Westlake's garage is, up in his basement. Their house was right next door, and that's where they planned the town. Am I seeing history being repeated? We only had three people would say, "A," "I," and then we had two who were not very timid, say, "No." But then after a while, God bless us all, the League of Women Voters got together, and we kept saying, "This isn't right. The majority should vote and be elected." And so we elected some young Turks, and they decided we should have a charter and some rules. And so the town hall was over on Rodman Street along with the fire department. And upstairs, the town, these young Turks would meet, but nobody could speak. So the League of Women Voters, we would go up and just sit in the back and make our presence known, and then when they were starting to write the listed, the rules for the town, I think, "Yeah, I wonder what this could be? Could one of you ladies look this up for us? I'm telling you, we have a pretty good bar up here, thanks to the League of Women Voters." Now, if you'd like to join, you're welcome. Don't even take that. I just don't want us to get back to the place where the town isn't represented. It really bothers me, and I know everybody has the best of intentions, and son of a gun didn't the League of Women Voters have some of you up for an election? I don't think we could talk about the library, because we figured anybody knew how important that was. You ought to know a little bit about the history of how this town used to be run before the League took over and helped out. And I'll be 94 next month.
Before you can get up and speak, Steve, please. I just wanted to go ahead and address, Meg, I'm so glad that you brought that photo here today. Someone had sent to me, actually, one of Mr. Pugh's postings on the Narragansett Town Council forum, about, specifically about that occasion, so I'm happy to talk about why I was there. I'm an elected official, and a couple of weeks, or I'm not even sure about the timing, before this vote was taken, I was on the losing side of the vote. I voted not to purchase the Belmont Building. But as an elected official, I had to show up. I went there, Patty, I shook your hand, I said, "This is going to be a very happy day for you, Patty Harkrey." I went there because I was an elected official. That's what you do, you show up. And to Mr. Pugh's question on social media, asking about, this doesn't, doesn't this then state my, my support of the project? My answer is no, I'm an elected official. Just as when you and Patrick were on the losing side of the last meeting, you chose to walk out. Sometimes you're going to be on the winning side, sometimes you're going to be on the losing side, but as an elected official, you stay the ground, you show up, you go to work. You guys, you left the last meeting, you missed an executive session afterward. We had heard that you had, and I'd love to know the truth, were you out at a bar with Susan Bonanno afterwards, rather than doing some business? That's the question, it's been on social media, so I figured I'd like to ask you guys if that's true.
I'd like to address that. You know what, if someone need reading, I don't really remember. I have personally attended at the regular town council meeting for four-plus years as the first time I missed a meeting. So I think...
You walked out.
I did, I walked out after that daze of democracy. I couldn't sound like to sit up here anymore. I'm sorry.
As an elected official, sometimes you're going to be on the winning side, sometimes you're going to be on the losing side. No matter what it is, you need to be here for the town, that's your job.
This is a public comment, I think, I think we've, this is devolving into something it shouldn't, but it's public comment, it's supposed to be comments about what you feel about what's going on in the town. And so, is there anyone else who can add something constructive to the conversation? Go ahead.
Hi, Stephen Bellis, 2 Blindbrook Drive, Narragansett. A little lighter side. Two weeks ago, Councilman Lima said that he really does want a library, but a state-of-the-art library. He also said that he would produce a RFP for a new state-of-the-art library in two weeks, which is tonight. I would like to know if the councilman has his RFP with him tonight, and if not, when will the RFP for a new state-of-the-art library be available? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? I guess.
Patricia Cole, 20 Bayberry Road in Narragansett. And I'd just like to say, as elected officials, you are supposed to adhere to the principles of a representative democracy. That means that when the majority votes for something, even if you don't agree, and you can't persuade us to come to your side, which you have not done, you have to adhere to the principles of a representative democracy.
Hi, Lori.
Lori Kelly, 25 Wildfield, Pharma. I just want to go over and thank you, Jesse and Patrick, of course, but for going over some of the history tonight, because I think that is helpful. We feel like we've said at every single meeting since 2009, but clearly, a lot of people are not, you know, following along and are coming in late to the project. Some other things that I, so NPR now wants to have the RFP for the Belmont, great, but I want to remind the council, all five of you, that, you know, we have... that, you know, we have had architects, two different architect plans for our current building, one in 2008 and one in 2015. And we had cost estimation numbers on those projects that were presented to the council at that time. And for those of you who were not on the council at that time, we have invited each and every one of you to come to the library and go over these numbers and these plans, which we've had. So that work has been done, which is why it is so confusing to us why people are saying the last council didn't do their due diligence, the last council was not, you know, fiscally responsible in making this decision. That is not true. We have had the longest, slowest project in the history of Narragansett in anything regarding building projects that I've seen. Perhaps I'm wrong. And it has been done in a fiscally responsible way. The Belmont Project was chosen because the numbers made sense. People wanted it in the pier, and it was going to be by far the cheapest building to refit and renovate. The only other thing that I wanted to, oh, oh. So I did want to mention very briefly that, you know, we have five years on the bond from 2016. And I believe a lot of this delaying game, which is starting, I'm starting to agree with Jesse, it seems to be a game that's going on because the bond will run out. And then we won't have to talk about Belmont anymore. Then we'll have to start all over again because obviously, that's what is going forward with the three that are voting against this project. So the time is running out. We really need to go forward with the RFP. There is no harm in finding out what the numbers are saying. And to start throwing other things into the mix now is very late. And I think it's interesting that NPA now is worried about the Belmont Building being sold because, of course, that's going to affect that if it becomes drug rehabilitation or some other entity that we can't control. And once it's sold, it could be resold again to some other device, other business that we would have no control over. So the only other thing is that, yes, people have gotten very emotional and have called each other names. And, you know, I certainly do not support that. And I'm sure the council doesn't support that as well. But I have never heard, in all the years that I've been coming to the council, a sitting council member saying, "You vote in South Kingstown," to a person who is publicly speaking on any issue here. And I caution you, because we say our address in Narragansett, we're not saying whether we vote here or not. And I have never heard anyone make that distinction. So I hope that we can back away from that kind of attitude. Thank you.
Just a clarification, Matt, since that was me who asked for that. When you come to the podium, it's actually even stated there. You ask to state your name and your address. And unfortunately, someone had given an address that was the address of the library. And I felt it was important to straighten that out because people that are listening, people that are being informed, we really want to know what people think that are town residents. Sure, we want to understand what South Kingstown residents might say, but it's important for the taxpayers to understand what other taxpayers think.
All right, great. We're going to move on now to our executive session. A motion to retire to executive session of the town council in accordance with the general laws.